You are live.
Thank you. Okay, so it is Tuesday, October 20th. It's 5:35 PM. Adequate notice of the meeting has been given in accordance with the Sunshine Law. Notice was published on October 9th, 2020 in the Star Ledger, the official newspaper for the Township of Springfield for the year 2020, and posted in the Annex Building on October 9, 2020, and posted to the Township of Springfield website if I'm not mistaken. Let's stand to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, if we can have a roll call?
Yep. Mr. Mark Cunningham.
I am here.
Mr. Stephen Hockstein.
Here.
Mr. Daniel Polrock. Mr. Harris Laffer. Mr. Stephen Ferschenbaum. You gotta unmute. I'll come back to him. Ms. Cara Greco. Mr. Raj Sahada. Vice Chair Schner.
Here.
Here.
And I see Mr. Stephen Ferschenbaum.
If you put the mouse in a box, it'll say, it'll come up and say unmute on the upper right-hand corner.
Hold the spacebar down. Try that.
Maybe he could just raise his right hand to show he's here.
Okay, thank you. Okay, has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from September 2020? If so, are there any questions, comments? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the minute.
I move to approve.
Thank you.
Thanks, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Approval of the resolutions from the previous board meeting, the first resolution of memorization that is up is application number 2020-22 for 29 High Point Drive, Block 3209, Lot 5. Are there any questions? And if not, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'm making a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Great. Vice Chair Schner.
Yes.
Mr. Hockstein.
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yes.
And Mr. Sahada.
Abstain as I was not at the meeting last month, I think during this application.
Great, thank you. Motion passes.
Excellent. Our next resolution of memorization that is up for approval is on application number 2020-19, 31 Rose Avenue, Block 1201, Lot 21. Are there any questions on the resolution? And if not, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Raj, were you listening in on this one?
Yes.
I think I was only, I only got part of it, and I will have to abstain as well.
Okay, okay. So, Mr. Ferschenbaum?
Approve. Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
And?
Yes, I don't know if you asked me, but yes.
I think you abstained.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, but thanks.
Application number 2020-23, resolution of approval. This is for 20 Fernhill Road, Block 3304, Lot 5. Are there any questions on the resolution? And if not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you second that?
Okay, great, thank you. Vice Chair.
Mr. Ferschenbaum?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schner?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Hockstein?
Yes.
Mr. Sahada?
cautiously abstain.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to our applications. We have two on the agenda this evening. The first application is application number 2020-26, Chris and Vangy Weber, 53 South Maple Avenue, Block 902, Lot 11, for a front yard setback on the front steps. We will bring the applicants into the room, and we will have the witnesses testify. After each witness testifies, we will open it to the public. If you are on the Zoom video, you can put your name and address into the Q and A if you would like to ask a question or speak. If you are on the phone, you can raise your hand hitting star nine in order to speak, and star six will unmute you. At the end of the application, we will also open it up to public comments so that anyone who'd like to comment on the application can. Apu, do we have the applicants in the Zoom room?
You do.
Excellent. How are you? I think you're muted.
Hi.
Good evening. How are you?
Good, good.
Do you want to just walk us through the requests and tell us a little about what you're trying to do and the reasons for doing so?
Need.
Before you do that, before you do that, sorry, our attorney Bruce Bergen will swear you in.
If you would both please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm to tell the truth?
Yes.
Could each of you state your name and your home address?
Vangy Weber. 53 South Maple Avenue in Springfield, 07081.
And Christopher Weber, 53 South Maple Avenue, Springfield, New Jersey, 07081.
Thank you. Proceed.
So, we have our steps go into it's hard to explain, but if you look at exhibit, I think it's Exhibit A or Exhibit 1, you'll see that our stairs lead up to the front door. Somewhere along the line, I've asked my neighbors. One being here 40 some odd years says it's always been like that. Somewhere over the last 50, 60 years, somebody has enclosed in our front porch. So you have three sides with the front side being a door. So when you go to stand and open the door, you are actually standing on a stair, and you reach the door handle, which is probably going to be about head high, and you swing it open, you step up inside. So what we would like to do is, we would like to extend the stairs 36 inches. We'd like to build a landing off the stair, so you can stand there, open the door at proper height, and be able to walk into the door with no problems, and you're not actually standing on just a stair to open the door.
Okay, thank you. Do any board members have any questions?
I did, I have a question. I just want to make sure that the width of the new stairway that you're because it really doesn't show on the drawings, that the width is going to be equal to the width of the stairs that are there, and you're just extending.
It will be, it will be existing same dimensions as the stairs. We're actually just going to build off the stair and extend three feet out and come straight down, but, but it will not will not be any wider, will not be any narrower, and I believe we still have at that point 20-plus feet to the curb, so we're probably the only house on the block that hasn't had it done yet over the years.
I just was asking only because it doesn't really show on your plans. I just want to make sure that we're clarifying that it's as wide as the existing stairs, and you're going out three feet as a platform from the existing.
It's not adding to the feed, it's going from the additional top step.
But no wider. That's all. That's all I was asking. It's no wider, and there's no roof on it.
No.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members have any questions for the applicants? Do we have any members of the public that have any questions or would wish to speak on this application? If so, again, just put your name and address in the Q and A, or you can raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone. Apu, we have no one?
Seeing none.
Thank you. I'm inclined to grant this variance. I think that there is a little safety issue posed with the narrowness of the stairs as it is right now, and I do not believe that this will cause any detriment to the public, so I would be in favor of approving this application.
I'll move it.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Great. Mr. Ferschenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Hockstein?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Sahada?
Yes.
Vice Chair Schner?
Yes.
And Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Have a great night.
Good luck.
Our second application on the agenda is application number 2020-3. This is MMPD Cars LLC, doing business as AutoLand Toyota, located at 170 US Route 22 East. Property location is Block 3703, Lot 1. This is preliminary and final site plan approval with a use variance for a service lease and sale center.
I'm looking for Apu Jayvon. He's there. And hopefully, when Jay gets on, he can direct you as to who to add.
Yeah, also, if you're in the waiting room and you should be added as a professional, you can raise your hand just to let Apu know. Okay, great. Do we have everyone here? It looks like we do.
Yeah, you're muted.
You're muted.
Okay, I, I need.
How are you?
Good evening. I still need Mark Montanero to be added. Do you see him?
He was just moved out of the waiting room, so here we are. He's here.
Okay. Thank you.
Excellent. Whenever you're ready to begin.
Madam Chairwoman, for the record, my name is Jaybone. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Schiller and Pittenger. Schiller, Pittenger, let me start over. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Schiller, Pittenger, and Galvin, PC. I represent the applicant here tonight. I am expecting to present brief testimony from three witnesses. They are Mark Montanero, who is, runs AutoLand, Joshua Tyner, our engineer, and John McDonough, our planner. We'll try not to take too much of your time. I'd like to start with Mr. Montanero, please.
Okay, good evening, everyone. How are you? Thank you for allowing us to present this application.
Mark, the attorney has to swear you in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
Absolutely.
Please state your full name, spell your last name, give your business address.
Mark Montanero, M-O-N-T-E-N-E-R-O, Route 22 West Springfield, New Jersey. You want the full address, 170 Route 22 East, I'm sorry.
Okay. Mark, what is your relationship to the applicant MMPD Cars ST?
I'm the dealer principal, owner of the dealership, and, you know, we're excited about sprucing this place up.
Okay, and, and very briefly, would you tell the board what you're seeking permission to do?
Absolutely. The dealership is pretty old. We redid the entire showroom years ago, which was approved by the board, and we're looking to renovate our entire service and parks facility specifically in accordance to the initiative by Toyota Motor Company, and we want to be able to provide a better customer experience for all of our customers that come through the door. We're going to be looking to triple the size of our waiting area, get all of the amenities that is needed. Obviously, with COVID and everything going on, I mean, not that there ever could be timing, you know, could never be better, but it's really going to enable us to really give social distancing. We have a tremendous amount of customer traffic in here every single day. So, you know, that the biggest, the biggest feedback that we get from our customers is our waiting area is too small. It looks like it's 1985, and we're, we're really, you know, the time to invest this money probably isn't now, but we've got to look past this, and we must get this done.
Okay. And, and that's really all I wanted Mr. Montanero to, to tell the board, but you, you guys may have some questions for him?
In terms of the existing buildings, can you just walk me through operationally exactly what currently exists in the buildings?
Sure.
And then which, which buildings, there's one, I'm gonna do, you walk me through, please.
So it's no worries at all. I'm assuming one of our team can share the screen, but I'll do my best to explain it. Currently, the existing facility has our customer drive-through pretty much down the down the center of the, towards, towards the westbound side of the building, down the center, where customers have to walk to the right and to the left to be helped. What we're trying to do is streamline it. All we're doing is we're moving the customer drive-through under the awning where it currently exists, and we're taking the customer waiting area, and we're almost tripling it in size, and we're putting it to the left. So if you were to pull into our facility, you could literally exit your car to the left, not have to walk across a lane of traffic or go off a bit, somebody else pulling in on one of the other lanes, and you would be assisted, and you would, you know, that's, that's the way it would work. I'm hoping that you have a couple of the images that were sent in. Because the before and after is just mind-boggling.
We do. Okay.
Can I ask a question? I, I don't know if this is for you or one of the other professionals. Is the footprint of the building staying the same? Are you just reconfiguring it?
You know, it's funny, thank you. I asked the same question right before we got on the call, because I was a little confused as why everybody was telling me the footprint was changing, and it was explained to me, and I'll let the professional explain it, is Mark, technically, you're right, the footprint isn't changing. However, where your two awnings are, where you currently enter and exit the facility, the two awnings that are over the drive-through, those will be enclosed. So to answer your question, we will pick up that small area on each side as additional part of the footprint. Is that correct, Jay?
Well, Josh will explain that when he.
Okay, thank you, and I guess the professional will explain that, how the building is being built.
Thank you, Steve.
Are there any other questions for this witness? I'll open it up to the public if there's any questions specifically for this witness at this time. I'm seeing none. Apu, any?
Seeing none.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Madam Chairman, the, the second witness then is Joshua Tyner, our engineer. Mr. Tyner, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth?
I do.
Please state your full name, spell your last name, and give your professional address.
Joshua Tyner, that's spelled T, isn't Thomas, I-N-E-R. My address professionally is 433 North Avenue East in Westfield, New Jersey, 07090. That's the Redcom offices.
Thank you. Madam Chair. Mr. Tyner, would you give the board the benefit of your educational background and professional licensing?
I studied civil engineering from Penn State, at Penn State University, where I received a Bachelor's of Science degree in civil engineering. I've been licensed since 2003 in a state of New Jersey, and I haven't testified before this board, but I've testified in Springfield before the planning board.
And what is your present title with your employer?
Yeah, I work, I work for a company called Redcom. I am the Vice President of Engineering.
Is your license current?
Yes, my license is current. It's updated, everything, yeah.
Madam Chairwoman, I would ask that Mr. Tyner be qualified to testify as an engineer?
Thank you. Do any members of the board have any objections to qualifying Mr. Tyner as an expert in engineering? Excellent, you are qualified.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tyner, would you describe the site and the proposed changes to the building?
Yeah, if it pleases everybody, I'd like to share my screen, and that be okay at this time?
Yes.
Is that visible?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this, is this going to be a copy of what, is this the site plan that was submitted to the board that we already have in our records? Or will there be new, is this a new exhibit?
These are the same exhibits that were submitted.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, so this exhibit is an existing perspective of the existing portion of the building that's getting renovated. What Mr. Montanero was speaking about earlier is this area. I might as well just key in on it right now.
I, I don't know if the other board members are seeing the same thing I am, or if everyone within the meeting is seeing the same thing I am, but I only see a portion of the plan.
That's correct. You can only see the bottom portion. You can only see the legend on the bottom of the screen. There you go.
Is that better?
Much better.
Okay, that's just because of, I have dual screens. Apologize for that. Okay, so, um, I mean, we can talk a little bit about the site, but to simplify this application, you can see this portion of the building, and what Mr. Montanero was talking about, there's this overhang here, which happens on both sides of the building at the current drive-through, and that will be enclosed, and the face of this building will be flush, and that's where that extra space comes from. The new looks like that, so it's, it's now a flush, straight wall that comes across. That adds 771 square feet technically to the footprint. The roof line is exactly the same in the before and after, and in that, this line here, right to the edge of this wall, this wall along where this gutter is, is where the same wall is in the proposed conditions. You can see that from this colorized site plan, which shows the proposed condition. So taking a step back, this, this site location is 170 Route 22 East in Springfield. It's also Block 3703, Lot 1. It's on the south side of Route 22. Lawrence Avenue bounds this site to the west, and there's another lot that bounds it to the east. To the south, this lot is bound by Diamond Road. If you look at the aerial exhibit, which was also provided, here's Route 22, here's where you're fronting on Route 22. There's three buildings on this site currently. These two are both sales buildings. This building here is the parts and service building that we're talking about in this application. The site plan's zoomed in basically on this part of the, the site. And looking again at the colors exhibit, which rotates it slightly, this is that service and parts building. The work of the addition is taking what was that overhang, which is here and here. There's a, there's a wall here that is a parapet wall on the existing. You can see that wall here. A parapet wall does remain in the, in the pose. It's still there. You can see how you go from what was referred to as an awning, but it's really an enclosed section of building under a sloped roof, and now it will just continue out at the same height, and so you're cleaning up this presentation of the building. Other minor changes, there's an island here existing where they came out, and we've made that a little wider of a drive, 45 foot, two inches now, and the island is a smaller island, but it pretty much remains the same in terms of the circulation patterns on site. You would enter this aspect of the property off of Lawrence Road by making a left or a right coming in. You drive around the back, and they see the elevation where they can enter into the service areas. As Mr. Montanero was explaining, cars coming in for service have two aisles, and all of the waiting area is now on the left from that perspective. So from where we were standing before, it's on the right. If you were looking this way, it's on the right, but when you enter your experiences, you get out of your car and go to the left into this area, which has renovations interior only up to this part of the building. So the rest of the building remains as is. The renovations occur from here. It's like one-third of the building over. There's exterior renovations happening as per that elevation rendering that we showed. That's, that's at least a description of the, the changes to the site that are being proposed.
Now, before we, is there anything else you wanted to say before we get to the engineers' report?
There's no major changes to the drainage patterns on site. We, you know, we would be connecting generally into, we are extending a drain pipe that brings water down to an inlet down at this part of the site by running it up the side of the building. Currently, water comes out of roof leaders that pretty much drain into this part of the site as well. So it's, there's no major changes to drainage. We do have changes to lighting. We're putting lighting on the sides of the building consistent with requirements and limitations of the ordinance. Though, there's some new landscaping being placed along this island here, just shrubbery, as this island will be modified when we do the work. The the areas entering and coming up to the Lawrence Road and right around the entrance into the service area are going to be repaved with new asphalt, but for the most part, very limited site work on this property.
Okay, do you have any comments specifically directed to Mr. Holloway's report of March 11th?
I see the, the requirements. We would provide a signed copy of the site survey. That's not a problem. We definitely do that. The applicant's testified testimony regarding site operations, hours, and staffing. I think that's probably best for Mr. Montanero to talk about. However, I would say that the lighting is consistent with the ordinance, where the lighting is called out to be turned off by 10 PM. And then the third point would be testifier regarding changes to site utilities, lighting, signage, and solid waste disposal. My understanding, no changes to solid waste disposal. No changes to site utilities other than the drainage pipe that I mentioned, which is an 10-inch, you know, high-density polyethylene pipe. Lighting, which I also mentioned, these are only building monoliths that are being added. Six building monoliths will be added. And signage, changes to the signage. And signage changes to the signage. Let's go back to the run the the image. So this is the the existing what's on the building. Now there's a sign here. And I can refer to the plans or we can look at the the rendering. The rendering shows on this side, there's this parts department sign represents this existing parts department sign, which is to remain. These building minor signs will be taken down. There's going to be a Toyota emblem on both sides of the building. An auto land on this side and one on the other side that says service reception. If everyone can see that this is from sheet six, which is part of the application. Also reflective on the elevations, which are sheet A six, which was in the the application. The end of the building, the long end has no signage. The where you enter in and drive in in your experience, it says service reception and there is a Toyota logo emblem and and sign and then auto land and Toyota on the exit side. This is what faces Lawrence Road. There are some variances required associated with the signage. Bring that up and talk to it. Or this requires no more than one wall sign. And we have four, as you can see on the building. This is building managed signage variances. There's a maximum sign height limitation of five feet. This Toyota emblem on both sides is a six-foot-high sign. So we're seeking relief for that. Then there's a another ordinance limitation that says businesses with additional public entrances facing the rear side parking lot shall be permitted an additional wall mounted sign no larger than six square feet identifying that entrance. And on this other side, we are having the service reception sign and a Toyota, which adds up its fifty-one and thirty-three square feet, respectively, exceeding the six-feet limitation. There is some just in in terms of other signage, you know, this application did not bring in anything on ground-matted signage, but as you can see, there are ground-matted signage, which would be existing to remain. I think this applicant would prefer, if possible, that we would replace these signs with something more updated. We're not in this application. We can if it would be be acceptable to the board, if they were to approve this application with this condition as well. Would be interested in putting in ground-matted signage consistent with the intent and consistent with the new branding, but if that's not acceptable to the board, since it was not submitted in the application, we can always come back with another application for that purpose at to change those signs. But within this area, square footages of the existing signages, I think we could put together a package of newer signs that would match this type of presentation for the for the property and to just make the site look nicer sooner rather than later. That would be our intent, if possible.
If the if the board is inclined, I'm sorry, this is Catherine Sarmat, the board planner. I think that it could be a condition of approval that they provide the signage package to myself and the board engineer. As long as they're conforming to trigger a D variance, a bulk variance, I think that you could create a condition where we we would we would review it for consistency with the sign ordinance in in the township, and it could be approved that way.
Thank you. Yeah, we'd appreciate the consideration if if the board so pleases.
Thank you. It's definitely something we'll consider.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tiner, if you're done with the engineers report, I think there are some items in Ms. Sarmad's report of October seventh we wanted to discuss.
Yes. Unless she had any specific questions, I don't have any major concerns. I do, you know, note that she would prefer that we reflect certain aspects of the site and the bulk existing and proposed conditions reflective of per zone. And looking at that, it doesn't seem to me that we would trigger any additional or change any of the variances other than what we represented to date, so we could revise that on the plans and the resubmission. And I know that she had a few other things that would be probably questions for the owner to speak about. One here, one one other thing that I am familiar with architectural perspective is that this addition is just a first-floor addition. There's not a second floor proposed in in what's being changed or modified in the addition. And other testimony, I think, would be just related to the things that the planner would need to talk about or additional questions for Mr. Montanaro. Number seven, let me just review this real quick. It appears that the building height for the proposed portion being modified is nineteen point seven five feet. It shows it being aligned with the first and second stories of the existing portions of the building, while only the first floor plans have been provided. Clarify if there's a second. So yeah, that that's that same topic. This this is a one-story building here and in the new, this is this is drive-through, nothing above it. No additional offices up above than what already exists.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all that I had in my letter.
Yeah. We will make and provide you the app the approvals from Union County and Somerset Union Soil Conservation District when they are received. So, yeah, we we have no objections to any of the requirements of the planner's letter.
This is Chaz Holloway. I just have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure.
The the is the generator still being proposed?
The generator is proposed, actually, yes.
Is there going to be removal of a tree? I just looking at the Google Earth picture and there are some trees in that area. Will trees have to be removed?
This plan is not reflecting the tree, so I'm gonna say that I will work with you and I'll find out if there is, and if there is, then we will identify that and if there's some kind of fee that has to be paid related to that tree removal, we will make that.
Is the parking area in front, is that one-way or two-way parking drive aisle?
Are we talking about over here?
In front of the building, right along there.
This?
Right.
Yeah, to the left of the building along Lawrence is a one-way drive.
Okay, I was wondering why they had the where back where the curb island is, why they have the cut through between the the drive aisles right there.
Here? Oh, just for someone if they came around and then they wanted to come around to the right, because this is too.
It seems that there would be a conflict if anyone was coming out of the garage doors.
Coming here to the left.
Right, versus just using the same driveway to exit or?
I mean, it's it's the existing circulation pattern, you know, as it currently stands.
Okay, that's probably it's an existing pattern, then I would I would be amiable to keeping it. It was just a question I had for that particular traffic pattern.
Appreciate that. Thanks.
I have no further questions. Thank you.
Can I just add something? Do you think you should put a stop sign right before the garage, just so people stop and look?
Oh, here? Coming from this direction?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I I I agree with that.
Okay, yep. That makes sense. Okay. Jay, I mean, this is, you know, to you, I think that that pretty much concludes. Oh, I mean, I can talk about the, you know, there are a couple of bulk variances, you know, ones related to the condition of use that a planner is gonna speak to. The other that's identified is maximum lot coverage. The within the HC zone, your limitation on on lot coverage is sixty-three percent. The I forty zone is limited to seventy-two percent. And we existing and proposed will have an eighty-one point four percent coverage, which is the existing condition. However, based on breaking it out by zone, I believe those numbers would be eighty-one point two percent in the HC zone and eighty-one point six in the I forty zone.
So so although it's the same for the lot, you're you're kind of moving impervious cover from one zone to another?
I mean, it really is still just an existing non-conforming condition, and when you break out and look at the one lot broken down by each zone that it's within, that's the percentage of impervious within each zone that the lot yields within that zone. Does that follow?
Yeah, but but I think the important thing that that you said is that the existing condition for the lot is not being changed.
Correct, correct. Where we have roof now is where our roof is, you know, gonna be in the building. Previous areas are still going to be impervious. The minimalist changes. The third, the the last one that I would mention would be the maximum accessory building height. If you consider this an accessory building, it is maximum in both zones is fifteen feet. And this existing building is nineteen feet, nine inches. Although I'd like to note that that parapet height is twenty-one foot, five inches, and that parapet feature does remain at twenty-one feet, five inches, and then the entire rest of the roof line is shown and will be reflected at nineteen feet, nine inches.
So to the extent that the roof is not currently nineteen feet, nine inches, you're gonna match the existing height from the, I guess I'll call it the rear part of the building?
Correct.
Okay.
I believe that is it in terms of variances.
Madam Chairwoman, if the board has any further questions of the witness?
Thank you. Any members of the board have any questions? Okay, I'm just gonna open it up to the public. If any members of the public have any questions for this witness with respect to his engineering testimony, you can star nine on your phone or raise your hand or put your name and address in the Q and A here.
Seeing none.
Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes.
I I I just want to clarify concerning the maximum building height and maybe the planner can can chime in on this, but it is existing, but in essence, the the nonconformity is being expanded because a greater portion of the wall will be at that height. So I think technically there there really has to be as part of the application that that's a request for an expansion of of the nonconformity, not just pre-existing, but I I believe the planner can.
Oh, I we we agree with that, Mr. Burkin, and we're going to address that.
Okay, just thank you. Just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Thank you.
That then I'd like to call my final witness, who is John McDonough.
I'm gonna stop sharing my screen now so that he can if he chooses or needs to.
Mr. McDonough, do you swear affirm to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Could you please state your name, spell your last name and give your professional address?
Sure. Hi, everyone. My name is John McDonough, and that's spelled M C capital D O N O U G H. And my business address is right here at one oh one Gibraltar Drive in Parsippany, New Jersey.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Uh, Mr. McDonough, welcome back. Is your license current, good standing?
Yes, it has. Yes, it is.
Okay. Do any of the board members, we've seen Mr. McDonough a couple of times here. Do any of the board members have any objections to qualifying him as an expert in planning? Thank you. You can proceed.
Thank you. Mr. McDonough, would you start by describing the site and the plan that's in front of the board?
Sure, we're gonna take you back to a shared screen with an exhibit you already have, just to give you a little orientation here with respect to the site, and this is one of the exhibits that Josh just entered. Just to give you a little aerial perspective here, we've got a property that fronts on Route twenty-two, the prime commercial corridor here in the community. We're dealing with an exceptionally large lot. This is a nineteen, almost twenty-acre lot. So it is exceptionally large in the context of your zoning scheme. It's a five-acre zone in this area, so it's more than four times or almost four times the zoning requirement, which is important because that means we're dealing with a spacious site here that has adequate proportions, I'll say, to accommodate what the what the applicant is doing here without creating any any harm to the area. Importantly as well, it is a developed site. It's been a dealership for many years, so this is a, I'll say, longstanding part of your local landscape here. Not anything substantially changing, but for the fact that in this back building, which, as we know, is set way back from Route twenty-two. This is the service building and the applicant is simply putting, I'll say, an end cap on it that's going to modernize it and bring it up to current Toyota standards. It's going to meet brand customer expectations and brand familiarity and really, it's not only going to enhance the image of the site itself, but the whole corridor and the community. We know that retail and sales, perhaps more than any other land use, needs to stay fresh in the public eye and is constantly reimagining itself, and that's really the essence of of what the applicant is doing here. Not to mention the improved customer experience as well. The other interesting aspect of this location here is the surrounding neighborhood. You can see all of the larger buildings. This is not a residential neighborhood, so we are looking at a predominantly non-residential neighborhood. Again, in consideration with respect to neighborhood compatibility and the impact on the adjacent land uses. And then, of course, you see the line striking through the middle of the property, which is this unique split lot condition whereby we have the HC zoning and this project being a permitted conditional use in the zone, substantially complying with the conditions that would be associated with that conditional use. And then, as we work our way to the back of the property, that's where we're in the I forty industrial zone where the use is not permitted. Now, this has been a longstanding, lawfully existing protected land use that is, I'll say, discordant with the zoning. But again, talking about one lot here, this is not two lots. It just happens to straddle a lot line. Many zoning ordinances actually say that a lot line is meant to be coincident with a zone line, so it could arguably be implied that the zone line may, in reality, follow the the lot line. We're not arguing that here. We're simply going to put forth the proofs for a D one use variance. It's the most stringent test there is. I think this applicant actually meets that easily here. And so we'll walk the board through the proofs in that regard. Just taking you back to the reason why we're here, the improvement to the customer service area and the modernization of that end cap. Just reminding the board, the before certainly a dated appearance, and then the after with a nice, modern appearance. Again, that's going to improve the overall image of the site and the the surrounding landscape. In terms of the relief, your planner has given the board a good roadmap in terms of what the applicant is seeking here and asking the board to move on. The primary relief is use relief to allow this auto dealership and service component to extend into the I forty zone where it's not permitted, but where it has been for a long time. I've run this through the four parts of the Medici test for use relief and find that all four parts pass. On the first part, we look at the special reasons aspect of the test, and I think the first thing the board can certainly see hardship is a special reason under the land use law, and especially here, we have an undue hardship caused by split zoning. That's also recognized in the Cox Land Use Handbook that speaks about split lock conditions and that being another basis for a special reason for use relief. There's no way to access the back of this property without going through the HC portion, so the two parts of the lot are sort of married just by the the physical way this this property falls together. Second basis for advancement of the special reasons that the promotion of the general welfare is also considered a special reason, and I think our applicant And I think our applicant and our engineer architect as well has given the board some good special reasons in terms of the promotion of the general welfare, customer comfort, convenience, efficiency, a nice protected, covered, weather-protected area as well. And then, of course, the modern amenities of a lounge, of a cafe, a nice place to be while you're waiting for your car to be serviced. Probably why this land use has moved from the gas stations to the auto dealerships, it's just a much more comfortable experience for the customer. Promotion of a desirable visual environment is another special reason, and I think, again, the before and the after here simply speak for that. This is going to be a significant improvement over that which has been there for, for quite some time. All of the above advance purposes of the land use law, especially Purpose A, Purpose I, Purpose M, and Purpose G. Purpose G being that planning goal to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations. Second part of the test focuses on the site suitability. And I think practically speaking, it's clear-cut here that the site is particularly suited for the use by virtue of its longstanding history and association with this land use. It's located along a major highway. It's got excellent accessibility, connectivity to the regional road network. It's easy to get to. It's easy to get out of. It is also in a non-residential setting, which lends to its particular suitability as well. And then, of course, the physical condition of the property lends itself well to the use before the board. Going back again to what I said at the outset, that this is a very spacious site. To the extent that we're looking for signage relief, I think that is easily mitigated here by virtue of the fact that this location is so far offset from the road and so remote from residential uses, that the sign package is certainly going to be tasteful. It's going to fit well within the context of the building itself. It's not going to look overbearing or do any of those things that we want zone controls to prevent visual clutter, overbranding, those type of things are certainly not something we would see here. Third part of the test focuses on the neighborhood impact, and I think based on the testimony before the board, it's pretty clear that relief can be granted here without creating any impact of a substantially adverse nature. I don't think I've heard any unresolved conflict at this point that has not already been addressed by the applicant's professionals. Also, the site itself has been designed and the layout has been designed both inside and outside. They function safely and efficiently. And then finally, the last part of the test always brings us back to the vision for the area and what we see in the master plan and how we reconcile the fact that this use on this site is something that's not envisioned by the zone plan. I think we can certainly move here that this relates to a specific piece of property with distinct characteristics and not the zone as a whole. The ordinance is clear that it does not want this land use in the industrial districts, but there is a clear association with that here. And in that regard, I believe this will not create any substantial impairment to the integrity of the zone plan. We know with your most recent master plan reexamination, there is an emphasis on, again, bolstering those commercial uses and enhancing the stable ratable base along the Route 22 corridor. With respect to the secondary relief that the applicant is seeking, the height of the structure, again, this is an accessory structure here, at least that's the way the applicant is playing it, with the primary structure being the actual sales building. That triggers relief in the form of nineteen point seven five feet to the, to the highest point, whereas fifteen feet is the maximum allowed. Bearing in mind, if this were categorized as a principal building, this is a forty-foot zone. And so we're substantially below that. And also, any height relief here is mitigated by the extreme horizontal distance from the road as well. So I think the board can move favorably on the height relief under the flexible C balancing test whereby the benefits and the visual aesthetic of the project as a whole certainly advance any potential impacts associated with that relief. Lastly, again, just to underscore the sign package here, the relief related to the number of signs. Each one of them serves a distinct function, I think a beneficial function, an identifier, and the enhancement of wayfinding as well, without creating any substantially adverse problems in terms of the size, in terms of the area, in terms of the height of the letters, all of which I think blends very well and not perceivable as being a deviation in the context of the, the surrounding landscape or the zone plan. But I think the board can move favorably there as well under the C2 balancing test whereby we fold in the benefits of the application as a whole, as part and parcel with the relief. I believe the applicant here has put substantial credible evidence on the record to support the relief that the applicant is seeking. The applicant's met its burden under the law and approval for, for all of the relief that's before you is warranted. And with that, I'll, I'll pause if there are any questions or redirect from counsel.
I don't have any further questions for this witness.
Thank you. I will open it up. Actually, I have one question. Just to clarify, is the height nineteen point nine or is it nineteen point seven five? For the building?
I have in my notes nineteen point seven five, but I will stand corrected if, if I'm off.
We, we said it, the nine, the nine figure is nine inches, nineteen feet nine inches.
Yeah. Point seven five represents nine inches.
Nine inches, thank you. Okay, nineteen nine inches. I understand. Thank you. Okay, any board members have any questions for this witness?
Can I just ask one question about the signage? How's the signage gonna be illuminated?
I believe it is internally illuminated. It's not externally illuminated. I see Josh unmuting himself, so take it away, Josh.
He's gonna say the same thing. Yeah, internally illuminated.
Okay, thanks.
Our professionals have any comments or questions? Okay, I'll open it up to the public if there's any questions for this witness.
Seeing none.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam Chairwoman, that concludes the witnesses that the applicant is presenting.
Thank you. Okay, I will open up the application for any comments from the board. I can start. I think that this is an overall improvement. I think that the applicant has satisfied the proofs that are required to grant the variances requested. I do believe that we would have some conditions if the board agrees that the sign package could be submitted as a condition of approval, so long as it is consistent and the stop sign be added, because there is, I agree, a safety issue on the ingress and egress.
I agree with all those points. I think the split zone makes this a unique case by saying it was pretty good recovery.
We do need an additional comment regarding the generator and the tree.
Chad, that's to remove all the tree and the, whether the generator will be there or not.
I'd like to hear that this is a vast improvement to the building that's there, and I am in favor of this.
Agreed.
Okay. Okay, wait, have we, so are we dealing, how are we dealing with the tree issue?
Just make it a condition of, of the application?
That it'll be removed?
Well, the, the, the following, whatever the ordinance says, right? As long as it's done in accordance with, with the township rules.
We can see if there's a tree that's existing or not. It's really not shown on the plan, so the engineer has to provide the additional information. Let's say substantial tree has to be removed, then we would, would proceed with recommending planting a couple in its place.
Right.
Okay, so we'll add that as a third condition?
Yes.
Please.
And could I just ask, I mean, if we find a different alignment, if we do find a tree there and we just orient the generator differently and we can save that tree, then we would have to just, just reflect that way on the plan.
That would be preferred if that can be accomplished.
That'll be our goal.
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion to approve with the three conditions?
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Madam Chair, if I can just, I don't know if you opened it to the public for comments?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I, I did for, for Mr. McDonough's testimony, but let me just, yes, open it up to the public. Are there any comments, questions that you'd like to raise with respect to this application? If you are on the audio, you can hit star nine to raise your hand, and if you are in attendance, you can put your name and address in the Q and A or raise your hand. Of who? I see none.
Seeing none.
Thank you. Okay, with that, approval of this application with the three conditions regarding the tree, the signage package, and the stop sign. Is there a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Great. Vice Chair Schnur?
Yes.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Hockstein?
Yes.
Mr. Ferschenbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Sahada?
Yes.
And Chair Cohen?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Jen, our next meeting is scheduled for November seventeenth.
That's correct.
Okay, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Alright.
All in favor? Bye. All right, thank you, everyone. Have a good evening. Thank you.